I call this meeting your order. Slut to the flag first.
Mr. Bell here. Mr. Espen here. Mr. Genakid here. Mrs. Miller. Mr. Kender here. Mr. Finesse here. Mr. Sessenberg here. Mr. Chapman, I believe present. Mr. Casio here. In accordance with terms of the Sunshine Law Act, we note that this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, three newspapers and tapped into on January 7th, 2025. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices and pursuant to district policy number 0167, each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Thank you, Mr. Panati. Assistant Director report.
Thank you, Mr. Casio. Ms. McCann? We are continuing to highlight the great things happening in our schools. And tonight we have Mr. McCann, Principal of Grant School, along with his Vice Principal, Mr. Steve Wazorek, and students from Grant School to discuss Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you. I want to thank the board and Dr. Tansey obviously for allowing us to come today and present. I want to congratulate our students for their performance that they did on October 4th for Hispanic Heritage Celebration. Also, I'd like to thank and congratulate Ms. Ariola. She teaches Spanish over at Grant School. She does our multicultural club. And this is an extension of our multicultural club. But our multicultural club didn't start until this month. So this was all volunteer that Ms. Ariola did and set up with the students, you know, to get them ready all of September to make sure that they were ready for this performance. She did an outstanding job when I was going into the practices of Mr. Wazorek. Again, she's an asset to the Grant School community and we appreciate everything she did. And today, we are going to redo the performance. And it's ironic because it is the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month. So our first performance, the song that we are going to perform.
Ready?
Okay, get your mother. Where we go? Here? Take a seat, step forward.
Not this one.
No, no, stay back. You're on it.
Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Se necesita una poca de gracia. Una poca de gracia, mami, aquí arriba, arriba. Arriba, arriba, por ti seré, por ti seré, por ti seré. Yo no soy la dinero. Yo no soy la dinero, soy capitán, soy capitán, soy capitán. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Se necesita una poca de gracia. Una poca de gracia, mami, aquí arriba, arriba. Arriba, arriba, por ti seré, por ti seré, por ti seré. Yo no soy la dinero. Yo no soy la dinero, soy capitán, soy capitán, soy capitán. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba. Bamba, bamba.
One more song we'd like to present.
Y cuente los pasos que aquí le vamos. Cuenten los pasos que aquí le vamos. Uno, dos y tres. Uno, dos y tres. Que paso más se ve, que paso más se ve, es mi panga ere. Uno, dos y tres. Uno, dos y tres. Que paso más se ve, que paso más se ve, es mi panga ere. Uno, dos y tres, que es mi panga ere. Que paso más se ve, es mi panga ere. 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 Es mi panga ere.
Do students want to come around? So they can shake hands?
That made me want to dance. That was a great job. That was great. Great job.
Great job.
Great job.
Great job. Kill it.
Thank you. Thank you.
(Screaming)
Good chill out there.
Thank you so much. You did an incredible job. Our next presentation this evening is from our student representative, Brianna Sevier. Brianna is the junior class president representing the high school. She's very active in our school community as a member of the girls volleyball team, Spanish Honor Society, humanitarian club, and the spring track team. I'm sure Brianna has a lot to share with us about what's happening in the high school.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Tansey, Ms. Melissa, Board President, Mr. Casio, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Brianna LoBarato and I'm the Class of 2027 president. I'm also part of Spanish Honor Society, humanitarian, and environmental clubs that are held at South Plainfield High School. And I'm also on the girls varsity volleyball team and spring track team. I'm excited to deliver an update after happenings at South Plainfield High School since our last board meeting. And so in the South Plainfield Tigers Day, our community has had an incredible start for the new school year of 2025 to 2026. Starting in September, there was a club fair on the 29th. Students were able to stop by the information center during their intervention to check out various clubs offered at South Plainfield High School. I participated in this event and got myself into multiple more clubs, like the ones I mentioned earlier, as well as Art Honor Society, Faith in Action, and Tiger Rack. The high school also held a successful ESL family night that night. On the 30th, there was a senior college planning that was well attended by students and parents. Moving along, on October 1st, there was a successful blood drive for students and staff only. A boxout bowling assembly where a rapper came to share his experiences through life and how to explain to students how to not let fear control them in this state of our lives. And the amazing homecoming dance at the Greens, St. Andrews, and Clark. On October 3rd, the seniors got to enjoy their first senior sunrise, where they got to the school early to watch a sunrise amongst their peers in the field next to the high school. Earlier today, 10th and 11th graders took the PSAT. Students also retook the NJGPA exams this past week as needed and are awaiting their results. On October 28th, 29th, and 30th, high school students will be taking the NJSLA and/or NJGPA adaptive field test. There will be no delayed openings for non-testing students and programming is scheduled for them. In fact, this morning, seniors reported to be fitted for their cap and gowns as well. Tonight, there is a virtual basketball meeting and tomorrow is a parent night from Wellspring Counseling Services about rising trends in teenage uses with drugs. There are also upcoming and ongoing events happening in the high school. For example, picture retakes are available on October 23rd. Also, there is an ongoing food drive, non-perishable food only, in some classrooms and throughout the town that will be distributed amongst the families in need in South Plainfield. There will be a college and career planning night on November 18th in person at 6:00 P.M. More information is to come in the upcoming weeks. On November 20th, students can sign up to attend the HBCU College Fair at Keene University. HBCU stands for historic, historically black college universities. It's an instant decision day. Students sign up for this through counseling. All this information was sent to the families and students and guardians. Students and guardians are strongly encouraged to check their emails daily. Moving on to the recap of the season record so far for our sports teams. Starting with the varsity boys' volleyball team, the team is coming close to the end of their season with their record being 3-4, making them second in their league. Thursday, October 16th is senior night for the band, cheerleaders, and volleyball players. The game starts at 6:00 P.M. However, senior festivities will get started around 5:15 to 5:30 P.M. Girls volleyball varsity has a 12-7 winning streak. We just had our senior night last Thursday, October 9th. It was a major success as we made baskets and raffles to donate to breast cancer awareness and his campaign. We took the victory against JFK and had a huge bake sale to help support our team. The boys' soccer team had their senior night Tuesday, October 14th, against South Plainfield. While the boys are approaching GMCs and hoping to claim more victories. For cross-country, GMCs are on the 5th of November. The boys and girls are both trying to get top five in the GMCs. The boys' team is undefeated this year and they're trying to win the fifth division in a row. The girls' ski hockey team had a really good win against East Brunswick, which is their biggest rival, and they finally beat them after many years. Our girls won seven games in a row and their senior night is October 18th at 2:30 P.M. The girls' soccer team has had an amazing comeback since last year, winning important games and improving their record 3-3. They had just had their senior night last Friday, the 10th. Today, we are hoping they have a win as is their first round of GMC invitationals. Finally, the girls' gymnastics team is doing great with new routines and having their senior night coming up soon. Our girls have been doing different fundraisers to support their team around the school. It has been an exciting start of the school year and the students at South Plainfield High School continue to show credible school spirit, talent, and accomplishments. Thank you for giving our students the opportunity to keep improving academically and athletically and more. I am proud to represent our amazing high school, but more importantly, the growing community we have been able to create and keep driving upon. Thank you for your time and overall support. I hope you all have a nice evening. Go Tigers!
Brianna, thank you. You left the thing. Thank you. Great job. We have another presentation from one of our teachers who brought a special friend with them. So I don't know if you want to do it from there. Do you want to stand up? Do you want to go to the podium? So let me introduce to you. Our presentation this evening is from Kathy Simpson. Ms. Simpson is a fourth grade teacher at Roosevelt School. Ms. Simpson is here to introduce the newest addition to the South Plainfield School family, Brody. Brody is a therapy dog in training. Brody was rescued from the Mama Riya Animal Rescue in Hillsborough, New Jersey. And Brody has an absolutely wonderful disposition and is a perfect pet to support the emotional needs of our students. Just going to go here so I have his stats. Brody is, yes.
He's got stats.
That's right. He is. You even know what we got with Brody. Brody is a miniature poodle who is four months old and he has a backstory. So I'll let Kathy share his backstory. But Brody will be beginning his therapy lessons after he finishes his last round of... So he's fully vaccinated. I think you said that was on the 21st, right? 22nd. On the 22nd, he'll be fully vaccinated. Brody will be in district on all the days the school is open during the school year, as well as visiting with our ESY students over the summer. Brody will remain in Ms. Simpson's classroom during the day unless he's scheduled to visit other schools to participate in various activities or needs to get to work to support students who are having a difficult time due to stress or trauma. Ms. Simpson was the perfect choice as Brody's handler, as her two daughters, Bridgette and Kelly, are also faculty members in the district, ensuring that Brody will be a part of the South Plainfield School District for many, many years to come. So Kathy, I know you fell in love, so why don't you tell us a little about Brody?
My own. Okay. So I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Tansey. This is an honor. The opportunity that you have given my family goes beyond. I've been in the district for 34 years and I wouldn't be in any other district but South Plainfield School District. I grew up here. My children went to school here. I went to school here. And I'm making history right now, having the first therapy dog. So thank you for that opportunity. I really, really appreciate you trusting me and my two daughters. Brody started out with a hard life. He came from a farm out in Amish country in Lancaster and he was pretty much just thrown in a barn. And he pretty much vended for himself very little food. When Dr. Tansey first saw him, you could tell he looked malnourished. And it's been two weeks now and he eats like you wouldn't believe. He's loving life. He has made my life nicer, my daughters. And I'll tell you, I bring him into Roosevelt at the end of the day when none of the kids are there. And some of the staff is still there. And just to see the staff light up. So it's not just for the kids, it's for the staff, it's for all of you. And he's just unbelievable. He came, he was unfortunately flea-infested. That's why the back of him is shaved. But that's all growing back in. No fleas, thank God. He goes for his final immunizations on next Wednesday. And then we start training. So that should be fun. And also, this is something that I just came up with the other day. I am going to start writing a book. That's going to be called Brody, the Therapy Dog. A children's book. So I'm going to have my class onboard with me and we're going to write this book together. So, yes. Thank you.
Kathy, can I ask you, how excited are your kids in the class?
So yesterday, I put together the, I call it the condo for the dog. It's in the middle of my classroom. And I have a co-teacher, Mrs. Hunterden. And her and I were thinking, well, where should we put the dog? We don't want to put the dog like behind my desk. We'll put it in the middle of the room. And we have like a plate pen that has like acrylic windows and a door. It has carpeting in it, it has a bed. And then we're going to put a crate behind my desk in case he needs to just rest. So I sat the kids down and I said, guess what? We're making history. This class, right here, is going to be the first class ever in the South Plainfield School District to have a therapy dog. And if you could have saw the kid's expression, like you actually saw children just like sigh with their shoulders up and their shoulders going down. Everybody, whether they know it or not, needs a dog like this. They need someone to read to, to talk to, just to snuggle with, to hold with. We all need that. So this is going to be benefiting a lot of people. And congratulations, South Plainfield School District, for making this decision. This is wonderful.
Thank you, Kathy. Can we? I've already met Brody, but can the rest of us meet?
Of course. So he has a shirt that I had to buy him. It says, "I hate the homework." So I had, I had, I'm going to let him off leash so he can go to all of you. Go ahead. Let's go with mom. Come on, this way.
Look at him, he's right on the runway. You've only had him two weeks.
Yes.
Much bigger.
You coming to see?
Not much bigger. He'll get taller.
Sorry, sorry.
Hi, Brody.
He's adorable.
How long is he training?
Hi, you look great. You look so great.
Oh my gosh. Yeah. I'll take his shirt.
Biscuit in his pocket.
Yeah, it's because he's got some meat on it.
Is that a biscuit in your pocket?
You smell brandy. You smell brandy. Yes, you do.
You drink it again, Tom?
And his favorite dog is the German shepherd.
His dog.
I'm so happy the kids are so excited. I am so happy. Thank you so much.
Will you bring it to another school?
So luckily, it's not a classroom bound.
No way, man. It just left.
So she can bring it. So it actually really worked out. Simpson family was perfect.
My other daughter teaches third grade at Roosevelt and I literally live behind Roosevelt. So I chose that to do during the summer. I mean, I do the ESY, the top one. I'm great.
He said he's gone.
And all of my cousins.
So we ever get a dress.
Right, go live.
Everybody's out. One of us.
We're not done with you yet.
That was my fault. There you go.
I wish you luck if you went to the cafeteria.
I hope he doesn't miss the bell.
Brody made a run for it? Yes. We have one more presentation. It's on data, but I know the board would like to have a couple of words with Brianna.
More members comments? Mr. Chapman?
Brianna, I just want to compliment you on your presentation and your report. You know, the high school representatives that come up here and sit, you had to do an unbelievable job of presenting your information. You didn't stutter, you didn't snammer. I don't know if you practiced or rehearsed. It doesn't make a difference, right? If you did, because you're supposed to. But you killed it. You did a great job. You're a great representation of what South Plainfield High School is all about. And I want to thank you very much for coming here and giving a presentation tonight. I was very appreciative.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Brianna, thank you so much for being here. As Doug said, you were incredible. Class of 2027 president, so you have some time before you graduate. But the sky's the limit. You're just going to do incredible things and we are excited to be a part of your story as South Plainfield and we can't wait to see what you accomplish in life. Brody, welcome to the district. That's all I'm going to say on that. Two, I know Grant School isn't here. Mr. McCann, Mr. Wazorek, amazing job to you all and the culture that you have at Grant School right now. I know Ms. Ariola's gone, but she's doing incredible things. She was my teacher back in the day and she's still doing amazing things with her classes. The students were phenomenal. And Mr. McCann, you said a, today marks the end of Hispanic Heritage Month, but let us not forget Hispanic Heritage and let's celebrate and appreciate it every single day. That's all.
Anybody else? Brianna, well done. You're a parent, you're a guardian. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have another presentation.
I might sneak with you. Unless you want to hear Mary's presentation?
She's going to give it. Our final presentation for this evening is from Assistant Superintendent Mary Maleska, presentation on New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, the WIDA, the X-S for Ls, the DLMs, and the Advanced Placement Report. So, Ms. Maleska?
Thank you so much. Board members, you have the extended version of the presentation in your hands. This is the presentation that will be posted online. However, I have a short presentation for this evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Spolstra. All right. So for our presentation goals tonight, I'm going to record four assessments. We made this so long. I swear by law, I have to do this. So here we go. I will define and explain the scoring parameters for each of the assessments, report down on our scores, contextualize scores with comparative data, disaggregate separate group performance, and identify actionable steps to enhance student learning and performance. So the first thing I'll talk about is the NJSLA. Tested areas for this are English Language Arts grades 3 through 9, Mathematics grades 3 through 8, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry. And then Science grades 5, 8, and 11. They score on 1 through 5. And the percentages I'm going to talk about are only for levels 4 and 5 for students who met or exceeded the passing expectation. The next slide here is number 5 for everyone on the board. Our NJSLA Language Arts scores for grades 3 and 4, they're broken down here by each elementary school, Franklin, Riley, Kennedy, Roosevelt, as well as a comparison with the state. As you can see, the state, the orange bar, is mixed in here because we're doing this as a school rather than grade level across the district. So looking from left to right, I do want to point out that we have incredible growth from grades 3 through grades 4. And I'll talk a little bit more about cohort data as we move forward. Our next slide for Language Arts, grades 5 through 9. We have our percentages broken down by grade. And you can see on the right-hand side, the cluster of scores are actually for the grades across New Jersey, so a little different than the chart before. I'm going to take a moment to highlight the elementary cohort scores. So I understand that looking at snake scores, looking at our scores, they're not as high as 1.1. And I see that and my office sees that and we're taking a lot of steps to remedy this. But what I would like to highlight is that our students are making incredible growth. And if you look from grades 3 last year to grade 4 this year, just for Franklin, 36% passing up to a 57%. Riley was 30 to 65. Kennedy a 50 to 55. Roosevelt 43 to 48. And across New Jersey, it was a 44 to a 54. So we are really making amazing strides. That continues for the Language Arts secondary cohort. I'm now going to read all of the scores. We do have some work to do. Grades 8 to 9, that transition to the high school is a little tough, as well as 5 to 6. I think that shift from the elementary mindset into a middle school mentality, even though it's the same building, is a transition that we're working on. The next slide for everyone here is number 12 for all of you. So same framework as before. We're looking at New Jersey student learning standards for us and the assessment for mathematics grades 3 and 4. So you have Franklin, Riley, Kennedy, Roosevelt, and New Jersey for, as I said, this year's grades 3 and grade 4. Our next slide, you can see broken down as it was before. You have South Plainfield on the left-hand side, New Jersey on the right-hand side. Now this specifically goes not only grades 5, 6, 7, and 8, but our end, of course, assessments for Algebra 1 and Geometry. Now Algebra 1 is always an interesting area because as you can see, moving from grade 8 to Algebra 1 is a huge jump, going 26% to 40%. When we look at cohort data, you'll see that even more. So just something to take note of. Algebra 1 is when our students have their first split in terms of tracking for mathematics. So we have generally grades students seeing Math 8 and then students seeing Algebra 1. Again, our cohort data at the elementary level is primarily positive. Students are moving in an upwards trajectory. Franklin from 51% to 67. Riley from 42% to 62. And then Kennedy and Roosevelt, not as strong, but we all know we have areas to work on. And then across New Jersey, it's running almost the same. So looking at the secondary cohort, we're looking at math grades 4 and 5. 5 to 6, we had an increase from 34% to 39. 6 to 7 was an increase. 7 to 8, this is that area that's moving tough because eighth grade splits to Math 8 and Algebra 1. So you can see for grade 7, we have overall passing rate of 37%. When we went to the Math 8 assessment, it really dropped. But when you look at the Algebra 1 assessment, we were at a 96% passing. Now, in addition to all of the data that I just reviewed here, we do have subgroup scores broken down by race, gender, and program. And program stands anywhere from IEPs, 504, Grand Reducers. And program stands anywhere from IEPs, Bible Core, Free and Reduced Lunch. All of that information is online. But I would like everyone to know that we look at all of those components when making our action plans and addressing student needs. This is just kind of skimming through the most important details for the board tonight. NJSLA Science is offered in grades five, eight, and 11. Our scores are okay for Science. This is a little tough because it tests grade stands. So grade five is really looking at three, four, five. Eight is looking at six, seven, eight. And then grade 11 is looking at nine, 10, 11. So I don't think that Science is representative of our students' performance across the board in their subjects. I think that's a consistent perspective. However, these are our science scores for everyone to see. So specifically, data trends and action plans. We're focusing on continuing cohort growth. We do that primarily through vertical articulation. We do grade and course-level vertical articulation meetings to facilitate this continued growth. Teachers come together across grade stands. So it would be grades three all the way through 12. We have vertical articulation documents that are available online, evaluating the areas that students need to work on, what they leave class with, like their strongest characteristics versus their weakest, focusing on standards, and how we can map that vertical rate across the grade levels K through 12. We're also evaluating classroom rigor. This is one of the curriculum goals for the school year. We're doing that by implementing correlation analysis to ensure that instructional resources and scoring practices match state standardized assessment level expectations. What that means is teachers are going to look at students' grades in their classes compared to our district benchmark assessments and other common assessments. We're also going to have teachers participate in anonymous scoring during their PLCs. This means that they would not know which student they're scoring. They would all have the same. And they would work through scoring criteria and rubrics. So the goal for this is to create a more objective view of scoring so that it's a little more true to what is expected for the state assessment. We're also working very hard to support our diverse learners. You'll see throughout the year, we do have teachers being approved for what's called PSYOP training. This is a research-based framework for teaching multilingual learners. And it follows our shelter-in-place instructional model. So we do work to support all different types of learners. But that is a specific strategy for our multilingual learners. Moving forward for Access for Ls, this is a test for students, multilabel students. It is their English Language Proficiency Assessment. Students can score anywhere from a one to six through listening, speaking, reading, writing, oral language literacy, and comprehension. These assessments place students at different levels for English and the second language instruction. When we go through these scores, and it's slide 29 for anyone who has a paper copy here, it's done by students. So for kindergarten, we have 26 students. And you can see the spread of how many students are going from one through six, like emerging to essentially fluent. Now, it's hard to talk through trends for Access for Ls because it isn't truly a cohort assessment. We don't always have the same kindergartners taking this test from K through 12. And primarily, I'm going to pass through grades nine through 12 scores. If you look at our multilingual learner population growth, which is on page 32, you can see that we've had exponential growth through grades K through four, five through eight, nine through 12. And then just overall, we've gone from 103 students in 2023 up to 236. So we don't have, students don't necessarily arrive in kindergarten and stay through 12th grade. There's a lot of movement in terms of when students arrive. So in thinking about an action plan or data trends for Access for Ls, as I said, it can't really be analyzed as a cohort like other exams due to shifting population size and varying school entrance rates. As I talked about before, we'll continue with our shelter-in-place instructional strategy. And we'll continue training teachers with PSYOP. We also have online resources that allow teachers to change Lexile levels. So if you're a student in grade six, but you might be reading at a grade four level, we do have the ability to shift Lexile levels so that you could have a text in the skill area that you're comfortable in, what's comfortable for you and what you can read. So the goal would be to allow students to explore with texts that they're comfortable with while pushing them to excel beyond that. Our next test is Dynamic Learning Assessment. D L M is an assessment for students who have the most significant cognitive disabilities where general state assessments like NJSLA would not be appropriate even if we had offered accommodations. This, again, like the Access for Ls, you can't really analyze this as cohort data. So I'm really just presenting, we have a number of test takers, 14 total across the district taking ELA in Math. This is where they felt. We also have students taking Science. However, it's less than 10 students. And the state doesn't allow for you to report help on assessments who have less than 10. So as I said before, and this is slide 37 for everyone up here, D L M is incredibly specialized. And so the Special Services Department works directly with teachers to review students' individual score reports and adjust classroom support systems as needed. The CST reviews this data to ensure IEPs match the necessary programs. And as I said before, Science did not have enough of a population to report out. All right, our last assessment for the evening, the Advanced Placement. So we're on slide 31. Our Advanced Placement assessments, they're scored on a scale of one through five. Universities do take scores at four or five depending on what their criteria is. Sometimes they'll take three exams. AP exams are taken globally. And subject areas with less than eight students in them, they did not report out on. So that includes drawing and T V art and design. We have amazing AP scores. So this is a lucky place to end on. We have almost every single area except for one. We were well over the global average. So if you look through literature and composition, language and composition, Spanish and culture, psychology, like we have almost a 90% in scoring a four and a five on three, four, and five. Excuse me, on literature and composition, where the global average was a 74%. And you can see that consistently as I move through the rest of the slides. For U.S. history, world history, U.S. government and politics, macroeconomics. I mean, even causing a world history, we had a 97.67 school out of our students. And you can see we had 43 students take that exam. So we're not just looking at five students scoring incredibly well. We're really looking at a breadth of our student population taking these assessments and really scoring amazingly well. And you can see the same for Seminar, Research, Human Geography. Human Geography was a new class this year. So it's a brand-new curriculum, brand-new everything, brand-new test. And they still did incredibly well. Moving to STEM for Chemistry, the whole class, 100%, amazingly well. So it couldn't be prouder of our teachers, really across the board, but our Advanced Placement teachers focus a lot on how to best prepare students. The last slide for STEM, looking at Calculus A B. You know, the global average was 64%, ours was 95. Calculus B C, 100%, the global average was 79. So this trend just continues at the high school. Our scores are getting higher and higher and higher. Each year we place on the AP honor roll. This is the first year they're releasing the rankings in January. So I won't have those until then, but I can't imagine what would be on there for hosts. Just to wrap up, data and trends, action plans for AP. I think the primary reason our teachers do so well, we really spend a lot of time focusing on the actual assessment. They do correlation to see that their grades are matching the same level of rigor as that assessment. And that's really the catalyst as to why we want to start doing correlation data for grades really from three through 12. So that we can ensure the rigor in the classroom matches the rigor on the test. And hopefully, we can replicate the trends that we see for Advanced Placement in the past six years. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, I know how hard you were putting this presentation together. But I also know how hard you were every day just looking at this and this data, analyzing the data, finding different ways that we could, you know, improve instruction. So I appreciate all you do. Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Two quick things as a reminder to the public. Tomorrow is the last day that the, if you have not put in for a free-reduced lunch application, but you do have been receiving free-reduced lunch, breakfast, and lunch from last year and the beginning of this year, that ends tomorrow. So tomorrow will be the last day. So if you haven't resubmitted an application, that is going to expire starting on the 17th. Your child will begin to be charged for breakfast and lunch unless you go ahead and put in an application and find out if you qualify again. And the other thing I wanted to remind you is, I can't believe it's already October 15th. The next meeting we have will be wishing people a Happy Thanksgiving. So if it's at all possible and you are able to, just try and remember there are some families in need. And if you could possibly help out and support either the food banks that Brianna had talked about here in town, we also have one in the county. So anything that you might be able to do. And for our families who may be in need of some of the resources, please reach out to your guidance counselor. All that information is available in the schools. And we'll be able to get you in touch with organizations that would be able to help out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Any public comments on agenda items only? Seeing that resolution, approve prior board minutes?
So move.
Second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Esten?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gassio?
Yes. On the curriculum, make the rage. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Esten?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gassio?
Yes. Policy. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Esten?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gassio?
Yes. On personnel, A through D. So move.
Second.
Would I have a little discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah. I just, some things were brought to my attention today in regard to the shredding situation that we have. And I wonder if we could just table that for discussing in person in executive.
Shredding.
Shredding.
Have we talked about scanning and shredding?
Yeah.
It's in there. It's good to do it. It's on page seven.
So you want to take yours and help?
No, it's actually one. So you just want to.
All personal? Just, yeah. No, no, no.
Or is it E five through?
Five through 21.
Four. Yeah. No, five through. Seventeen.
Oh, through 17.
E five through 17.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make motion tables?
Make motion tables.
Or just pull them? Time to have a table. Well, we don't think that if you're okay with it, you can just pull it off. All right. So we'll bring it back after.
And the rest will go through.
Yeah. Okay. Get that. The rest of the board. Yeah.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Epstein, E three, seven. Mr. Esten?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gassio?
Yes. Finance, A through double D.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Esten?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gassio?
Yes. Any public comments? Seeing any board member comments?
Yep.
Mr. Giannakis? I just want to reiterate what Dr. Tantia said before about the free-reduced applications. It is really an important, important, important thing for you to do if you think that you might qualify for it. There is no stigma to it. Nobody would be able to recognize who's free, who's reduced, who's paid. It doesn't work like that anymore. So truly is no stigma. And it really is important because everybody deserves to eat. And if you think that would help your child at all, please fill those applications out. Even if you're not sure, fill them out. If you did it last year and you don't do it this year, it could expire and you'll be charged for the meals. So please try to get them in if you can. If you need help with it, I'm sure we have help available somewhere. So please, it's really important to do that.
In all the schools?
All the schools. Please, please. And I believe it's in multiple languages too, right?